To the Falls Township Board of Supervisors meeting, we are reconvening the meeting from June 23. It is Monday, June 30. We'll quickly salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The only thing that's changed from last meeting is I'm here in person and Mrs. Mullen is calling it. So, we didn't have an executive session, correct?
We did not.
All right. We are now consideration approval of hiring police officer Sean Perry. He has an impressive resume for such a young man, but we're happy to have him here and thank you and welcome to Falls Township. So with that, I'll take a motion to hire Sean Perry, or is there any comment needed?
Should we have the chief come up and introduce him?
You go.
So moved.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations. You want to come up and introduce him, chief?
Sean also has his mom and dad here and thank you for bringing him on board. Sean is actually the first graduate of our youth police academy that we've hired as a full-time police officer, so he holds that distinction among many others. He was born in Ohio but grew up here in Pennsylvania. He graduated as the class of 2022 from Pensbury High School. He's currently enrolled at Westchester University and working toward a bachelor's degree in criminal justice with a minor in white-collar crime. Sean is also in the National Guard. His job in the National Guard is a military police officer. He's been deployed as a military police officer and his duties were similar during his deployment to those of a corrections officer. Sean is known for being mature and hardworking and we're very happy to have him on board as part of our police team.
Excellent. So you're from Ohio, you were born?
Yes, sir.
Are you an Eagles fan?
I am, yes, sir.
You gotta think about it.
Good answer.
You got a picture? Was you getting a picture?
Yes.
I told you he was mature. You want to come on up?
Sure, yeah.
God bless him.
Thanks so much.
God bless him.
All right, that takes us, the next item is Amarok LLC conditional use hearing. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
I'll second the motion. All right. All those in favor of opening the hearing? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Dents. This is a conditional use hearing. The applicant is Amarol LLC and they have filed a conditional use application for their property located at 100 River Road. Tax map parcel number 13-051-001-032. It is located in the HI zoning district. The applicant seeks to install a low voltage perimeter security fence situated approximately four to eight feet behind an existing perimeter fence. Pursuant to our zoning code, section 209-37A, electric fences are permitted in industrial areas by conditional use. This hearing has been properly advertised and posted. Our court reporter is present this evening. The applicant is represented by attorney Mary Ann Garber. And as I just explained to Ms. Garber before, our procedure on these relatively straightforward conditional use hearings is for the applicant's attorney to give a summary of the testimony of any of their witnesses. Then ask your witness to come forward and to be sworn and ask them whether or not what you just said is accurate. Then you'll make yourself and your witness available for any questioning from questions from the board or from anyone seeking party status. Party status for anyone who's in the audience means that you wish to participate in this conditional use hearing as a party. This is different from making public comment. What this means is that you plan on presenting testimony and questioning witnesses that are presented by the applicant. Everyone will be entitled to make public comment, but if you wish party status, you'll need to come forward. Does anyone here tonight wish party status on this application? Seeing no hands, Ms. Garber, you may proceed.
Thank you so much. My name is Mary Ann Garber and I'm an attorney with the law firm of Buchanan, Ingersoll and Rooney, and I represent Amarok LLC. Amarok is a company that provides outdoor perimeter security systems to commercial and industrial developments. I have one witness with me here tonight. Her name is Michelle Affronti and she is the compliance manager for Amarok. Just a quick matter of housekeeping, I have some exhibits for the record that I'd like to hand up to the court reporter. Exhibit A1 is the deed for the property. A2 is proof of the mailed notice that we sent out to abutting property owners. A3 is the conditional use application itself. A4 is the three-sheet site plan that accompanied the conditional use application. A5 is the April 17, 2025 review letter that we received from the township engineer. And A6 are the minutes from the April 22, 2025 planning commission meeting because there wasn't any sort of written memorialization of their review and recommendation of our application, so I included that as an exhibit. As has been stated, Amarok has filed an application for a conditional use approval for a low voltage battery-powered perimeter security system at the FedEx Ground facility on the tax parcel that was noted by your solicitor at 100 River Road here in Falls Township. And the FedEx Ground facility is located within the Keystone Trade Center. The property is owned by NP Keystone Building 1 LLC and is leased by FedEx. And FedEx wants to install the system as an additional security measure for their facility. There is already an existing physical chain link perimeter fence and the system that we're proposing to install, actually one minor correction from the solicitor's comments, it will be four to eight inches behind the existing chain link fence, not four to eight feet. The property is owned, every industrial, and the proposed security system won't act as a physical barrier. That's what the existing chain link fence is there for. It's somewhat akin to an electrical fence and so that's why we're here seeking conditional use approval. The details of the system are shown on the three-sheet site plan that we've marked as exhibit A3. As shown on that plan, there will be signs warning of the electrical nature of the system every 30 feet mounted on the system's wires. And in addition, there will be signs posted on the existing chain link perimeter fence. The system is designed to set off an audible alarm when it's touched and it also sends a signal to Amarok's 24-hour monitoring station. And that contacts the business owner to let them know that they had an event. Once the business owner has verified a trespassing attempt has taken place, then Amarok's monitoring staff will then contact local authorities to be dispatched to the site. So there will be no false alarms. There will be a confirmation that the system's been triggered by the property owner and then Amarok will provide notice to the local authorities. The alarm can be silenced remotely by the business owner or it can be set to shut off automatically after a predetermined amount of time. The system does not directly connect to emergency services, thereby reducing the number of false alarms sent to local first responders. The system will also, in addition to setting off an alarm, it will emit a small pulse with a strength that's similar to, it was described at the planning commission meeting, a dog collar shock or a static electricity shock when you touch it. The system will not change or alter the layout or use of the existing property. It won't change anything about the vehicular access or other access to the site. The installation won't require any grading. It won't affect or change any of the stormwater management systems at the property. It's battery-powered, so no part of the system connects to the main grid. And it doesn't trigger any additional landscaping requirements or any associated lighting. It's surrounded, I think, as all of you are probably pretty familiar with the Keystone, with the Keystone Trade Center. It's surrounded on all sides by industrial uses. And when you look at the way that the system is designed on the site plan, you'll see that it's really comprised of a series of wires, very thin wires. And it's virtually invisible, so it won't be apparent to the naked eye from any of the surrounding uses and won't impact those uses in any way. As I mentioned earlier, we received a review letter from the township engineer on April 17. We've marked that as exhibit A5. And there were no issues of non-compliance identified in that letter. In the letter, the township engineer asked that we verify four things to confirm compliance with some of the specific standards for conditional use applications. And one of them was about emergency access and I had, as I had previously noted, no change to the access will be affected by the proposed system. It doesn't trigger any landscaping requirements. There was a question about maintenance of the ground cover in between the physical chain link fence and the security system. And as Michelle Affronti explained to the planning commission when we walked through this letter, there's room to weed whack in there and Amarok otherwise designs it such that that ground cover can be maintained. And as I mentioned, no changes to existing stormwater management. The township engineer also noted that we would need to comply with any comments that we receive from the township fire marshal, traffic engineer, or any Falls Township authority. We haven't gotten any comments on that application. And as I mentioned, we walked through this review letter with the planning commission on April 22. And when we were there before the planning commission, they did make one request, that there be an emergency shut-off mechanism for the system. So when we were there, Ms. Affronti indicated that we would install what's called a NOX 3502, which will shut off the power to the system when necessary. So we're agreeable to that being a condition of a conditional use approval that we're seeking from you tonight here. And with that condition, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of our conditional use application. So that is a overall summary of the project and how we've gotten here tonight. I would ask that Ms. Affronti be sworn in so that she can testify that that's a true and accurate summary of the testimony that she would have otherwise provided.
Michelle Affronti. M.I.C.H.E.L.L.E. Affronti, A.F.F.R.O.N.T.I.
Yes. Ms. Affronti, was the information I just provided true and accurate and the testimony you would have given if you were called upon to testify? Yes. And were the exhibits A1 through A6 that I identified all true and accurate to the best of your knowledge? Yes. We're available for any questions that the board may have.
So the short version of that is they're installing a 12-volt electric fence a few inches inside their regular fence. This is down inside what most people will know as the steel mill property where the Keystone Trade Center, it's at the FedEx property way off on River Road, not really accessible to anyone. That's the short version of it. Any questions from board members, Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, I have a couple. Who has access to the NOX emergency shut-off? Is it in-house security? For instance, if SWAT needs to come out to the property, how can, and they have to go through that fence and do they have to work with your team to get in or can they just hit a switch from their car?
So, we don't, sorry, we don't have any access to the NOX. The NOX is, the access to the NOX is all done through the fire department. The fire department has the only key to it. They would shut it off. They would come out, open the NOX, put the key in, and that would cut the power to it.
Okay, let me rephrase. If it's a hostage situation and SWAT's out there and the fire department isn't there and they can't go up to the building, how do they shut that off?
We can put one in if the sheriff's department or police department here participates in the program. We can put one in for that situation as well. We've done it before, the same type of thing. That's not a problem. We just have to reach out to police department, sheriff department, whoever covers that area and add an additional one. And that's fine, we're amicable with that, not a problem.
That's fine, that's all I have, thank you.
Mrs. Mullen, are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, it's just that you said it's invisible to the naked eye essentially, but it's also what's delivering the quote-unquote "dog collar" shock. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
You said it's invisible to the naked eye. Is that the same mechanism that is delivering the dog collar shock that you described?
So it's not invisible. It's very hard to see from the road. You can see it if you walk up to the perimeter fence. You'll be able to see it. You'll be able to see the poles. You'll be able to see the wires. You'll be able to see the signs. But if you were just driving by, it would be very hard to see. And the only thing that would catch your eye on that would be the signs. But yes, the wires are what delivers the pulse if you touch it. And it's a three ten thousandths of a second pulse.
And I assume that will be properly marked?
Yes, the signs have the warning on them that if you touch it, you would get a pulse. They have the international symbol and they have it written as well.
Thank you.
All right, any public comment needed? No hands. What do we do now?
You can close the public hearing and then if there's a motion to approve or deny.
All right. I'm making a motion to close the hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve this fence?
So moved.
All right, motion made and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, next we have a certificate of appropriateness for 133 Yardley Avenue. They have a, they're going to be erecting a garage with a pine board and battened siding and a steel black roof. This was approved by the hardboard. Looks very nice, the picture we have. Are there any questions from board members?
No questions.
No.
None. Any public comment needed? No hands, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made, I'll second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And then we have another one for, this one's confusing. Two Meeting House Square is the address. They're replacing a cedar roof with a cedar roof. This is pretty, it doesn't get any more straightforward than this. Is there any questions from board members?
No questions.
No.
Any public comment? No. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have another certificate of appropriateness for 37 Main Street. Remove existing concrete walkway, patio and solid wood fence and replace with paving stones, retention wall and new six-foot wood fence. Another one, these are pretty straightforward. Approved by the hardboard. Any questions from board members, Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Mrs. Mullen?
No.
I have none, is there any public comment needed? No hands, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made, I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So this takes us to these change orders. At our last meeting that these came up, we didn't approve change orders. We said we were going to wait till the end of the job, but apparently there's a chink in our chain because we were told if we don't approve these change orders, that contractors are going to start pulling off and leaving the job. So, Mr. Clark, can you talk briefly about why we have to approve these change orders?
Sure. After the last meeting and after discussions with the board, we took another look at the contract documents that were signed by all of the contractors and the township. Specifically, we looked at the document which is referred to as A201. This is the document that specifies payments, claims, dispute resolutions, stop work. And in that language, we could find nothing to say that the township can decline these change orders once they have been reviewed and approved by the entity who is empowered by the contractor to review and approve them. And that is Grace Construction. We took a little bit of a deeper look at section 15 of A201, which deals with disputes and what happens if we don't pay this. And while Article 15, a claim under Article 15, is the contractor's not permitted to stop work, since this pertains to payments, the contractor would be permitted to terminate the contract and walk away from the job. That would leave us at this very late stage of the project, having to go out to get someone to finish off the work. It's for that reason that we are recommending that the change orders that are on the agenda tonight, number eight, nine, 10, 11 and 12, be approved. And as we have discussed in the past, when the job is complete, there'll be an opportunity to take a look at all the issues surrounding this job. And if there's any action that needs to be taken, it would be taken at that time.
We have one from Rycon. QPI. Allstate Mechanical.
Maico.
Ronco Technology Solutions. And Grace Construction.
And Maico. And then Grace Construction.
What's the total dollar amount here?
Mr. Gates is present this evening.
This makes me sick that you keep coming here with these change orders. This one is absolutely crazy. This has been mismanaged from the start. Like you guys seem like you're in so far over your head, you can't manage Rycon and Rycon can't even drive the subs that are working there. It's a disgrace, but how much is the total? Go ahead and spit it out.
I don't have the total of everyone's change orders, but I could read off the total of each change order.
Go ahead, start.
We've got the three for Rycon, $66,755.08, $19,399.48 and $188,471.62.
And you review, somebody reviews these and approves these, right, from Grace?
Correct. I review them in my office with my team.
Is anybody out there from Grace every day, full-time?
Every single day, yes.
All right, what else do you have here?
We've got QPI, the electrician. They have a change order for $15,169. We've got a change order for Maico, the plumbing contractor, for $1,164.60. We've got a $0 change order for Allstate that comes out of their contingency that's still in the project.
All right, and that's it?
We've got, well, not quite. We've got Ronco. They are the security contractor. They were tasked with repairing damage that the general contractor created to their work. It's a rework, it gets back charged to the general contractor.
And that takes us up to...
Grace's change order.
Let me add these up real quick because this is... Do you have a total or no?
If you bear with me, I can give you a total.
I got $282,860.28 is what you read off.
Is that including Grace?
No. Does that sound right, Mr. Clark?
I think Mr. Takita is doing the math. As you could tell earlier, I can't tell the difference between inches and feet, so I'm not a good guy to be...
He's lost without Ms. Gallagher in training, we all knew that.
I came up with $287,175. No, that's not right.
The total is $350,791.18.
Okay, roll over, please. Mr. Palmer? Comments?
No, I'm just echoing everything that you alluded earlier. This is something we have to see through.
And just to clarify this, when Mr. Clark says that we're legally obligated, we were told that the subs were talking about pulling off the job, they didn't get these approved. So it's not like we just decided that we're just going to do it.
And Mr. Dents and members of the board, just to clarify, when I'm talking about the legal obligation, that applies to change orders eight through 12. 12, change order 13 is for Grace Construction and the same rules do not apply for Grace Construction.
All right, Ms. Mullen, any comments or questions?
No questions.
Board com, or public comment?
So, Mr. Clark, you just said Grace Construction, Jennifer Metzger, Falls Township, sorry. Number 13, you're saying Grace Construction is different rules, so he didn't read off his change order price?
We're at 1 through 12.
Or the landscape, okay. So our issue with this is we understand that the board is doing everything they can at this point. We appreciate that you're trying to figure out what the law is here and what we can do about it. The problem that we, overall, public concern is what can we do going forward so that we get better bids, better control over the contractors looking at this and we have better control over those contractors not doing this? Because this is giving people carte blanche to just completely...
We are required by law to go to the lowest bidder. There's nothing we can do about that.
Yeah, but they know what to bid in order to just do change orders later.
Well, somebody designs it, yeah. They have an idea of where they're at, I assume, I don't know.
So how is it that we're going to be able to go back after the project to look at this if we can't do it now?
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to discuss that at this point in time.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other public comment needed? Is there a motion?
And, Mr. Dents, you're taking a motion to approve eight through 12 together?
Correct.
So moved on eight to 12.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, you want to poll the board?
Yes, and just to clarify, the total was $350,791.35. I'd said eighteen.
Thirty-five cents, okay. Ms. Mullen?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Dentz?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Next, we have one, item thirteen, a Grace Construction change order, and what is the amount on this one?
This one is three hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five and thirty-two cents.
And what is this for? Security guards?
Partially, Grace paid for the security guard when the general contractor couldn't secure the site. It covers, so about a third of this cost is subcontractor costs to us between third-party testing inspections and security. This
What third-party inspections are they using that's not our inspectors?
We had, we had to get compaction testing done.
Oh, all right.
Concrete, steel, asphalt.
And that's a mess still, right, Mr. Jones, the asphalt?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we're working through issues where a lot of the base course paving didn't meet the compaction requirements, so we're working on a solution that we'll discuss with Grace and the board.
What kind of solution? Replace it?
There's a remove, replace, there's an option to proof roll it, observe that, and there's, PennDOT has a mechanism whereby if it doesn't meet certain requirements, the option would be to proof roll it, leave it in place if it meets the proof roll, and we'd pay less based on how many of the tests failed. And we're not sure what the amount less would be yet, but we'll discuss that with Grace, and it'll be out of the PennDOT publication four oh eight.
All right. Any questions from board members, Ms. Mullin?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, I did, I mean, it's a little trivia, but under security, hasn't the job site been robbed at least twice that I
Two times, yes. The second time, the security, the security guard was actually on the site on the other side of the building, but fortunately, they did find what was stolen, stored underneath Rycon's trailer, so it became a non-issue. I don't know if they ever caught the guy.
Their insurance cover the theft for that, the insurance company?
I believe their insurance covers, covers the theft of their materials on site.
We're paying for security and they're robbing when a guy is there?
It was, yes, it was one time with the security guard on site, they're secure now, there's, we're not, you're not paying for security guards anymore.
All right, any public comment?
Little better at math than some.
Can you repeat that?
I'm a little better at math than some, I'm trying to understand how it is that you're saying a third are for subs inspections. What's the other two thirds? I mean, if that's a security officer, you could pay a security officer a hundred thousand dollars, you could pay him two hundred thousand dollars for the entire year. What is this period of this change order? Please?
It starts in February third, looks like through May sixteenth?
That was the previous, so this covers, this is not to exceed cost for Grace's hourly for our full-time onsite superintendent, and my time and my office staff time, through November, which
That wasn't part of the contract?
We were contracted for ten months of construction management and two months of project closeout originally.
All right.
So, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Was that two months then, or is that from now through November? So this is a pre-cost?
I don't even know.
Right.
Yes, this is, this is a not to exceed cost, this is not try, I want, we don't wanna keep submitting change orders, right? This is
But you keep submitting change orders every month.
These aren't my change orders, these are the contractor's change orders. That's
It's Grace Construction's change order.
This one is, yes.
But this is a pre-cost.
I agree.
We're, you're not, we're not billing this amount, we're only billing our hours spent per month on the project.
All right. Any professional comments or questions?
No.
Is there a motion to pay this change order?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made, is there a second? There's no second, what happens?
Motion fails for lack of a second.
All right, motion fails. That takes us to item fourteen. This has nothing to do with the building, item fourteen, is the landscaping bids for twenty twenty-five from Falls Township. This is weed control, it looks like, correct, Mr. Tekeeta?
Yes, this is actually, we have an existing contract, there was an add-on for weed control and killer once a month along the areas behind public works.
Playgrounds and stuff.
Correct, and it's for a total of nine hundred, nine hundred dollars.
All right. Any questions from board members?
No, no questions.
No.
Any public comment on that? No. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Mr. Tekeeta, you wanna poll the board? Ms. Mullin?
Sorry, I muted, yeah.
Mr. Dentz?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
That takes us to the diesel and unleaded fuel bids for Falls Township. How much we're gonna pay per gallon? This is pretty straightforward, we do this every year. I don't see the amount. Any questions or comments from board members?
No.
No, no questions.
Any public comment? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made, all second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 This is surplus vehicle bids. We have a Buick Les Sabre. We sold for two thousand dollars at twenty-twelve Colorado, we did well on that one, fifty-six hundred dollars, it was appraised at like thirty-five to forty-nine hundred. A Ford Interceptor for nine hundred and thirty dollars. Any questions from board members? Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Mullin?
No.
Any public comment? Is there a motion to sell these vehicles?
So moved.
Motion made?
Second.
Motion made, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a proclamation of approval of a proclamation for Disability Pride Month. Falls Township, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, a proclamation on Disability Pride Month, whereas on July twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety, President George Bush signed into law the Americans with Disabilities Act, which protected individuals from discrimination based on disability, and whereas since the passage of the Act, celebrations of disability pride have been held in July across the globe commemorating its passage and affirming the important contributions, culture and identity of people with disabilities. And whereas Falls Township is an inclusive community and believes that all people regardless of ability are deserving of dignity, equality, opportunity, full participation in social and economic life and pride in who they are. Now therefore, this Board of Supervisors of the Township of Falls County of Bucks, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, does hereby proclaim July twenty twenty-five to be Disability Pride Month in Falls Township, proclaim today. Do we have to approve that?
Yes, you should be approving the proclamation.
Any, there's no questions, right, from public comment?
No.
I'll make the motion to approve the proclamation. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now we're gonna ratify the township insurance policy for the period of June eighteenth through, twenty twenty-five through June eighteenth, twenty twenty-six. And we actually are doing pretty well with this, right, Mr. Tekeeta?
Yes, we are.
Our rate went down. People that were uninsured last time are now insured again. Any questions from board members?
No.
None?
No questions.
Public comment? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Consideration of approval for the environmental policy from Crumman Forester Specialty Insurance Company. Any questions from board members?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Any public comment? This is, what is this for, Mr. Tekeeta, our environmental insurance?
This covers any environmental incidents we may have, coverage is the same as we had last year, and the premium, there's only, there's a minor increase of about two hundred dollars, it went from four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred, sorry, four thousand five hundred and seventy-eight to four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four.
And what is this insurance cover, Mr. Clark? Or Mr. Tekeeta?
Any pollution liability and cleanup costs?
Any environmental issues? Any public comment needed? Go ahead.
So, we have a ton of pollution issues in Falls Township, we have a ton of pollution issues in Falls Township, so I'm wondering who I could follow up with on that so that I don't necessarily eat board time now?
I think this is if there's an incident, like a spill of some sort of the township building or on our property, this isn't just pollution.
So this isn't like prior issues?
This is liability.
This is liability if something happened that we caused.
Right, but we, we do have liabilities that we caused, and they haven't been dealt with yet, so I don't know who I would follow up with on that.
I don't know what you mean.
So like, one of them is the Brezesinski land, like, we sold it to him, we knew there were tires on it, now there's more problems than there were before, like, what if that comes up at some point where we have to clean it up? What are we gonna do about the landfill that we got, you know, the super fund on, but nobody ever finished cleaning that Levittown landfill up? So like, those like things that could end up being black swan events at some point that we haven't really dealt with, are they part of this policy, or is this for new stuff?
This would be something, an incident that happened.
Okay.
Like if we had a car accident and something spilled, yeah.
God forbid something
I think we used it at the township building when they had that
We put a claim in.
Yeah, we did make a claim at the new building when they had that leak.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any questions, any other questions, comments, any board comments?
No comments.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consideration of our flood insurance policy from Tokio with an I, T-O-K-I-O, Marine Specialty. Any, you wanna go over this one, Mr. Tekeeta, real quick?
The coverage is
All right.
Yes, the coverage is the same as last year, and our premium has not changed, it is two thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-six cents.
Right. This is any questions from board members? This specifically covers the Mill Creek Parkway, Falls Leighton Road concession stand and stuff like that, is that what this is? What am I reading there?
Yes, that's correct.
This is two specific locations. I guess it's in a flood plain.
Correct.
Okay.
Does it have any exposure for like the boat ramp or anything like that for storms?
No, it does not.
Any board questions besides Mr. Palmer's, Ms. Mullin?
Nope.
Any public comment? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item twenty-one, consideration of approval for cyber risk coverage policy, what is this for, Mr. Tekeeta or Clark?
This, this is to protect all our IT services, web coverage in case we should get hacked or somebody tries to hold any of our information hostage. We have a three million dollar limit with a five thousand dollar deductible, the expiring premium was three, thirty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, the new premium is thirty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars, it's a very modest increase.
All right, is there questions from board members?
Yeah, when, I think last year there was something that happened to the MS with nine-one-one system, even though it was with the county, but we use that, did that cost us funds to deal with that? And if so, would that have been claimable under this?
It did not cost us anything.
Didn't cost us anything? No out of pocket?
No.
Ms. Mullin?
No questions.
Any public comment? Excuse me.
I'm sorry, just a quick question. How are we determining that the three million dollars is enough coverage? Like, is it based on a certain amount of income per month or a certain amount?
It's usually done by a risk assessment from our insurance carrier, and then they recommend an amount based on the size of the municipality, the type of data that we have.
Okay, so we know we're covered with the three million?
Yeah, up to three million dollars.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that takes us to the consideration of approval for the Valley Day lease agreement. This is a mess, right, Mr. Clark?
Yeah, it's a bit of a mess.
So, back in, earlier this year, Valley Day School came to us and said, hey, that playground you guys have is our property, that's not your property. Okay, but we didn't know that, you guys can have it. Then they decided they wanted to lock it down and not let anybody from Falls Township use the playground. Am I correct so far?
Correct, only the one additional fact is, all the equipment on the playground is ours, and we maintain it.
So then people from the community told us that there used to be some kind of agreement, nobody in Falls Township now knows of any agreement, nobody at Valley Day knows of any agreement. They found out when they had their property appraised, I believe, or something like that, that's when they found that it wasn't their ours. So, there's some back and forth, you know, we said that we would continue to maintain it and stuff like that, but they are, there's a lot of asks from them, correct?
Correct.
Demands?
Correct.
So yours, your suggestion is that we don't approve this?
Yes, that's gonna be our ultimate recommendation. As you indicated, when we heard from members of the community that they no longer had access to this park, we reached back out to Valley Day School, because the township supervisors directed my office to try to negotiate an agreement that would allow residents to continue to use the park. We reached back out to Valley Day School and we wanted to start some discussions regarding reaching an agreement that would work for both Valley Day School and for the township. We were essentially presented with Valley Day School's demands, and then we were told it was a take it or leave it proposition. We went back to them, we drafted an agreement that we thought covered them, protected them, but also protected the township, and again, we were told that no, they either take what we are, what they were offering, or they would reject it. Ultimately, after going back and forth with them a little time, the next demand was that we, we either approve it or reject it at tonight's meeting. I think a couple of the major sticking points are, even though they want it to be closed to the public during school hours, which would be eight AM to four PM, although our Park and Rec Director, Brian Andrews, has told us that's never been the current practice, it's always been open in the school day. So now the park would only be open from sunrise to eight AM and from four PM to sunset. The Valley Day School would require the township to obtain prior approval before the township could undertake any repairs, maintenances, maintenance or changes to the equipment. All of the equipment is ours and has been maintained and repaired by the township for years. The reason why that's incredibly problematic is that if we're aware of a dangerous condition on this equipment and we don't take action immediately, we can be held liable and lose our sovereign immunity in that particular instance. So there can't be a time where we have to get their prior approval to make necessary repairs. The Valley Day School is also requiring that if we're gonna make any changes to the existing equipment, we have to provide them with our plans and obtain the prior written permission from the Day School to which they may withhold for any reason they want. It's not even a reasonable standard, they say we can withhold it for any reason we want. And again, despite the equipment already belonging to us, they've added a provision that says we need to pay their expenses and attorney's fees as well as six percent on any cost that they incur. There's a disagreement about the indemnification language to be used in the agreement, we would need, we suggested a joint indemnification, they refused to indemnify us. There's no lease, but they're asking for a six percent default, we don't even know what that six percent would be on. And Valley Day School is seeking the township to obtain additional insurance for such things as vandalism and theft, and would require Valley Day School to be an additional insured on township insurance policies related to the lot. I can say to the board members, I've, in my thirty years of practicing law, I've negotiated a lot of contracts, I can tell when somebody doesn't want to reach an agreement on a contract, and that's exactly what we're getting right now, we're getting somebody who doesn't want to reach an agreement, that's why they're putting out a whole lot of what can only be described as ridiculous terms and refusing out a whole lot of what can only be described as ridiculous terms and refusing to negotiate on it. I would recommend that we not approve this agreement tonight, I would recommend that we remove all of our equipment, uh, from the site as quickly as possible.
All right, just for those at home, when we talk about maintenance of playground equipment, it's not like anybody can go in there, these guys, you have to be trained and certified to maintain this equipment, it's a huge liability for us if something goes wrong. Um, so I wanted to put that out there, but this is pretty straightforward, that's a great explanation, Mr. Clark, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Palmer?
No, I just echo Mr. Clark.
All right, Ms. Mullin?
I just have a comment, which is that when we found out that this wasn't our property, I was very much in, the whole board was very much in favor in finding out how to make this work. We heard from a lot of our residents, they were using the playground, I mean, some people almost daily, uh, we heard, and Mr. Clark did give an excellent explanation, but one of the things was, um, their attorneys and, you know, Valley Day School, they became aggressive so quickly in the process. I a hundred percent agree with the solicitor's assessment that they just don't want us there, and it's very unfortunate, we were very happy to, okay, this has been a handshake deal, let's just put it on paper and keep it as, exactly as it's been working for the past however many years. And that's not, that's not what they want to do. So, um, it's unfortunate, but I absolutely do not think that we can continue with this. And another note is that, uh, our Parks and Rec Director, Brian Andrews, has indicated that some of the equipment can be moved to replace some of our aging equipment at our other playgrounds.
Thank you. Any public comment needed?
So I just, we appreciate you really taking the time to kind of look at everything for this, we, you know, have only talked to a few people about this topic, and really agree that the playground equipment just needs to be taken off, because there's just so much liability for us with our playground equipment being there, and so much liability for them, for us being on their land. So if it's going to be arduous, we appreciate that you've taken the time to look at this so closely, and we would opt that we would take our equipment off. Thank you so much.
It's been locked, I mean, I don't know if it's been opened since this all came to light, has it?
I don't believe so.
It's been locked all night. All right, so what do we do now, just a motion to deny?
You, you can, you can make a motion to, uh, reject the lease with Valley Day School.
I'm going to make a, a motion to reject this, uh, lease.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What?
Your microphone.
Sorry, I apologize, I made a motion to reject the lease agreement, and that was seconded and voted on and denied. Um, Eric, there's no appointments tonight, correct, Mr. Palmer?
No.
Ms. Mullin?
No.
No, I have none. That takes us to the escrow releases for UFP Real Estate LLC on Rock Run Road. Escrow release amount, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, thirty-nine dollars and one cents. Is that the only one?
That's it.
That's it, so just so people, I know we've said this a thousand times, this isn't our money that we're spending, this is money that we hold in escrow for these developers, um, and then Mr. Jones's team decides, you know, when it's appropriate to release the money, based on how far along the project is, there's still about seventy-seven thousand or seventy-two thousand dollars left in escrow. Um, any questions from board members?
No questions.
Ms. Mullin?
No.
Any public comment? Is there a motion to pay, release this escrow release?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Takes us to the minutes from May twenty-first and June tenth. Any, uh, errors or changes needed? Anyone?
No.
Excellent, this is always Mrs. Pullin', I'm sure it's hard, uh, doing this remotely. So is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Just moved, seconded.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Engineers' report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The engineers' report for the month of May indicates that there were three new land developments submitted and two new earth disturbance applications. Uh, updates are identified by red text, I'll touch on a few of them. The LPC Morrisville on South Pennsylvania Avenue is finishing up, uh, they're working on curbs, fencing, landscaping. I believe that they're targeting, uh, two months from now, um, to, to seek occupancy. The HiOsen project is operating under a temporary certificate of occupancy, waiting for vegetation to establish. Uh, the Dangit Track that's on Spencer Avenue, that's recently gone under construction, um, working on, uh, earthwork and erosion control measures. Uh, the Pensbury School District identified next is the, uh, the construction that's ongoing for the previously approved alternate field. Um, I'll jump down towards the end of the list, as you recall, they recently submitted an amended application to add lighting to that. Um, this is updating the construction, which was already approved, and it's underground stormwater management. Um, the Gelest Phase Three is also operating under a temporary, uh, certificate of occupancy, uh, waiting for vegetation to establish. Uh, the Air Liquide Project, um, recent construction activities include landscaping. Um, the North Point Area Three, Building Twenty, um, is, the one building is nearing completion with wearing course pavement, um, being applied and other small site work improvements. Um, the Lycon Investment Company, um, recently started construction, uh, with erosion control measures. Uh, moving down the list, the Levittown Lanes project, uh, will be before this board next month in July. Uh, they were scheduled to appear, um, last week, but asked to be continued. Um, the North Point Area Two, um, amended, um, plans, that's still under construction with drainage and demolition, um, while the, uh, Area Two amended plan comes back to the board. The Hale Properties, um, was a sketch plan that was submitted to us, we issued a, a review letter, and, uh, they are appealing to the zoning hearing board for various dimensional variances. Um, the Amrock, we heard tonight, um, Pensbury, next on this list is the high school, we issued our review letter, sent it to the applicant and the manager, um, there's a fair amount of comments in that letter, they indicated they may want to appear at the planning commission in July, but it, it may be August now by the time they get the plans revised. Apparently they have, um, you know, some work to do on the stormwater management that wasn't quite as, as, um, straightforward as they anticipated. Um, the PGE Rentals, um, will be before the planning commission, that was recently some, on the list of the new submissions, that will be before the planning commission in July, that's on Lower Marsville Road. Um, the North Point Lot Twenty is simply a subdivision of land, um, for the construction project I mentioned earlier, and that was approved last week at the planning commission, will likely be before the board in, um, July. And the Lakeview Townhomes is again another sketch plan, um, we issued a review letter, and they are seeking zoning relief at the zoning hearing board. I imagine if both sketch plans are successful, they'll come back through as land developments. In terms of the earth disturbances, the Calamar Properties project is complete, um, the waste management, um, listed below that is substantially complete. Um, the North Point Falls Industrial, um, they're working on basin, uh, and stormwater management. In the last column, the Newman Residence has been completed, the Commons at Falsington, that, that, uh, organization went and built some retaining walls, uh, without permits, we were made aware of it, um, and we're now reviewing what the contractor constructed in terms of whether it meets good engineering practice in our codes. Um, the Sunbelt, Sunbelt Forest Products, that's on Rock Run, that's substantially complete, and it was the subject of the escrow release just a few minutes ago. Um, One New Bold Road LLC, uh, the project has commenced with drainage work, um, and then at the bottom are the newer submissions, and, uh, number sixty-seven, the Pro Group properties has been approved, that means a letter recommending the issuance of an earth disturbance permit was sent. Um, the North Point Falls Industrial, that's operating under a TCO or multiple TCOs, and that's for the, for the multiple parking areas that are down near, um, Phase Two, uh, for the amended, um, Building Six. And then the six forty, fifty-four Lincoln Highway has been approved, the fifty-eight-five Cabot LP has been approved, the other waste management properties, earth disturbance is under review, and the Chu Residence Pool has been approved as well. As far as the township building, we spoke about it briefly, uh, the ongoing site work is sidewalks, ADA ramps, and curb construction as we work through the, uh, paving issues with the contract.
Concrete is being done, but the paving has issues, correct?
Yes, the concrete is more related to the, um, ADA ramps along Lincoln Highway.
How bad is the paving issue?
All of the core samples, so, so there was nuclear density testing, which is typical when it was being rolled, compacted, and those tests passed. And there was an area where we asked them, we've rejected it because there was an area where it didn't pass, that was constructed during the month of July when the weather wasn't permitting, we told them they, they can't pave, but they did anyway. And so when those, um, tests came back, obviously they failed for compaction because it was too cold.
You told them not to do it, they did it anyway, and then it failed?
And then it failed, so they, they knew they had to remove and replace that, and so Grace hired, one of the third-party inspection companies went out and did their own testing and found that other areas that were done during normal weather conditions also failed for compaction, and so they hired a different company to go out and do core samples, so there were twelve core samples that were done throughout, um, most of the paving, and they're all below what's acceptable.
So what do they keep hiring different contractors for, thinking they're going to have a better answer?
The core samples are a more accurate way to test for density and?
They're a more accurate way?
More accurate when you do a core sample, so, so, you know, whether or not the nuclear density, density testing machine was calibrated properly, there's a lot of potential variables in that process. Normally, they check out, but in this case, the density testing in Situ was passing, and when they did the core samples, it's not. And it's much less in terms of density.
So you're just going to have to redo the whole thing?
We're going to have to redo the whole thing, and if that, I mean, we'll, we'll bring this to the board's attention, um, when we come to a resolution, but it may be, and there's also core samples that show less depth than required, so they have a lot of issues, and I believe it was the contractor who didn't meet the RCO who had done the work that's now failing. So, but we'll, we'll suggest, again, you know, we'll get recommendations, but, but it's either remove and replace wholesale, or we can proof roll it with a loaded triaxle and see if there's any movement and, and for the sense of timing.
All right, they got to make it right.
Well, they're going to make it right either way, and, and that would be a decision that the board could make, we'd have a couple of options, whether we delay the project to remove and replace, or whether we recommend that we think it's going to withstand the test of time, but at a lesser payout than what the bid called for because they didn't meet our, meet our compaction, but that would be subject to a, to a pretty extensive site investigation.
All right, um, thank you. Thank you. That's a mess over there with that. Um, that takes us to manager comment, Mr. Tekeeta?
Just the township building will be closed on Friday, July fourth, in observance of Independence Day.
All right, board comment, Mr. Palmer?
Uh, no comment.
Ms. Mullin?
No comment.
All right, I have no comment, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded, all in favor? Aye. Thank you.